Awesome, there we go. Welcome everybody to Ambassador Town Hall number 33. Today we're joined by quite a big group. There's Hotspot, there's Roger Gabotti, Crandano, Creed, Gujo, Doron, Felix, Fly You Fools, Hadoff, Ian, Christian, LittleBuds, MigoX, Oscar, Sugar and Spice, Tivo and Wintermelon. Awesome to see quite some new faces here, welcome, welcome. Also some returning faces, that's also great. Let me share my screen so I can cover a bit of the agenda.
As you mentioned, Town Hall 33 on Dwork Task is 34. There's a mismatch somewhere.
Okay, good to know.
To me it's also 33.
Then I fucked up somewhere, sorry.
It's okay, then there shouldn't be tasks for 32 probably?
I think last week's did pose, so I just manually created one for last week Felix. Maybe I just skipped last week.
Okay, nice.
Well, it's this week right now, so good stuff. Structure of today's call is as per usual, first a bit of coverage on the workgroups, then some other tasks and some further mentions and then there's space for open topics. And I think it's time to dive right in. So, on the workgroups, starting with the Process Guild. The meeting for that, the weekly meeting is right after this one, at 19 UTC. So if you're interested in the Process Guild, do stick around. Perhaps Tivo, could I invite you to share a little about the Process Guild and what happened?
To be honest, I don't remember what happened last week. I think we worked on like modeling the process, how do we kind of manage tasks and agendas? Then we have something in place for an upcoming this week Treasury Guild. Basically we find the consensus and like discussion of how we'll be improving it in the Process Guild itself. Today however, I know that we are going to work on the workshop. We do have quick amount of upcoming activities and stuff like as always. Also we kind of laid down a process for that too, like how do we manage it? The main issue we're currently like solving is that we have more topics than we have manpower to solve them and the time to solve them. So we basically created a bit more robust way to able to address all the issues and kind of prioritize them in a way that we could actually get some stuff done. On another side, the translation process was also the first onboarding happened today. That was successful, so the first output of the translation system has been quite successful. Hopefully it keeps on going, but the hardest part now comes where I'm actually gonna try to deliver what Peter usually does with the, once the translation is done. If that's successful, then the next step is to see if the people who are translating are able to now themselves take tasks and complete them in a way that that it's acceptable to just pay out.
Yep, perhaps on the workshop, that's gonna be right after this call. I think that one is to dive into the reviewing of Marketplace services? If I'm remembering correctly?
No, that was an extra meeting to use Dwork, so basically looking at deep funding proposals. And basically assessing them, finding some insights from them. And then creating a Dwork tasks to recognize what you did. And all this process is recorded and it's basically the idea of showing, if you do a thing, how would you record that on Dwork? So, okay, could it, like an example of how to kind of self-report through Dwork in a way that it doesn't add overhead to Ambassador project to a bounty member? So like who manage the tasks? So that members themselves can find ways to be useful, like I can do this. You propose a task, now you also have the way to understand how to do the task and then hopefully this kind of visual video of entire this project would work is kind of giving you the idea. And in the vision, it just adds a little value to the deep funding.
Absolutely, yeah, yeah, thanks, mixed it up indeed, but you're right. Awesome, thanks.
On that note, I think in Swarm there are also bounties specifically to assess. So if somebody's or they felt like, ooh, deep funding, I can assess and get rewarded for that. So there is a place for that. In Ambassador Program, we mainly meant to do that activity workshop to create content for using Dwork.
Yep, absolutely. Alright, then onto the next of the list being the Treasury Guild. The bi-weekly meeting is actually happening this week. 16 UTC, let me verify, should be correct. Yes, so yeah, Thursday at 16 UTC. And something I want to, well, there's a whole bunch of things we will have to discuss. And I think previous time it was also a little bit short in time, so yeah. We'll see tomorrow how that exactly, or the day after tomorrow rather, how that exactly will work out. One of the things I'm personally wondering about is how to shape up next to the task-based stuff we do, also to start using role-based, role-based tasks, I guess. Because a lot of stuff that people can do for the Ambassador Program is more like an ongoing thing than a small dedicated task. Yeah, that's among the topics, feel free to remind me of other topics that will be covered.
I may have a personal bias, but from Swarm side, we are trying to bring back Treasury Free and integrating Singularity Net with Treasury Guild.
I fully share that bias, I can say, since right now I do the distribution of rewards manually. And adopting a system for that would be very, very welcome.
I would say, let's suffer Pete still a little bit, no Treasury system, okay.
So this week, we basically spent at least around, I guess, 10 to 50 minutes on that. And if the presentation, the things you say makes sense, no like questions which need another, like a process, another week of thinking, then it's quite possible that we start next week already using this system.
Yeah, awesome, good stuff. So then I guess also during the meeting, this decision will be made on starting to implement.
Who's who want to join to hear or like how do we even provide services for Singularity Net? That's a good way to see how brother meets the road, what needs to be done. And then if you have anything useful, what Singularity Net can get value from? And you also, then why not join in and that's integrate?
Is it possible to get a little update on the community podcast and what's happening with that? Or maybe not?
Absolutely, that would be next on the list, so definitely. Well, it's not the most fun news, I did share it on the community podcast channel on Discord, but also for those watching. Basically the situation there is that Julian saw himself forced to step back from leading the podcast workgroup. Without going in too much detail, basically it was related to yeah, allocating time and then the compensation in shape of funding that didn't line up at all for him. And yeah, basically that's, yeah, it was unsustainable for him to be allocating all his time to. And yeah, so practically speaking, this means this is now on hold. Yesterday there was no workgroup meeting for this. And that also brings it to the Town Hall, to the broader Ambassador Program to, if there's somebody interested in stepping up or taking initiative in this, there's definitely room for that. At the same time, yeah, I personally feel like that's up to those interested, like I'm not gonna push for somebody not really motivated to do this, to go and do that, if that makes sense.
Can I jump in? So earlier I talked to Fly and I don't remember like precisely, but I think, I mean, I'm personally interested in the podcast. Like I believe Fly is kind of interested as well, I don't wanna speak for him, but and also we're like doing the video workgroup, so that might kind of lie in the same, let's say broad lines of the video group as well. So we could work on, we could, I personally am willing to like put in some time because I'm really interested in podcasting, so I would say like an episode a month is doable. Perhaps I can do more, but at least I can engage into like once a month to fully prepare for like a good, for like a good episode, like a one hour thing or 40 minutes or something like that.
It's a bit more Treasury Guild topic, but last time I think we had a discussion that perhaps we could integrate that podcast group into Marketing Guild budget and so that we have more teams. Roger, do you have any ideas? Would that be a good idea to put like podcast group under a certain like category? Is it like a video material creation or a different type of material under Marketing Guild? Or you prefer it to be like a standalone group?
I personally think like since our vision, like the last time we talked to Fly and the other guys, like our vision for the video group is to create like short videos, like kind of five minutes or even shorts, like under one minute videos that are kind of like related to what we're doing. Whether it's like from meetings of like Gerto or something else, like other community members speaking or our own meetings and our own content that we're creating in the Ambassador Program. And like the podcast falls perfectly into that. Because you could do a podcast and then you can make shorts out of it, that would create better content. So you're just like funneling one content through like this process where you're making the podcast, which is, which has video format as well, and in the same time creating shorts out of it. So I think it falls in a really good way into this kind of process. I don't know, what do you guys think?
I think it's really cool that you take action there, Royal. Everything what you may say makes just hella sense, I would say.
Thanks, appreciate it. I mean, that's kind of the logic behind so many successful podcasts. I mean, if you look at Joe Rogan, for example, his short videos are just mind blowing. I mean, they got like the most views even compared to his very successful podcast. Lex Freedom, same thing, like his shorts, like short videos, like two minutes, three minutes are like really like very, like very much consumed more than his actual podcast. So I think it kind of makes sense to put it in the same process where you're making the podcast and the short video format.
If I can chime in, really lovely to see your energy, Roger. Great ideas and it kind of makes me think a bit of how we how we structure it in terms of, do we want it to be one person leading? Or perhaps more of a kind of decentralized structure? And it's interesting, your point Tivo about the kind of renaming or kind of aiming it, rephrasing it in a way, redefining what it is. And I think this could kind of go a bit into the role-based roles ideas, if there's a larger allocation. And it's really lovely to, when the energy is there in the community, that we can kind of give someone a bit of, a bit of, a bit of something just to, just to let them see what happens. I think that that could be very interesting to kind of not try and control it too much via kind of tasks. Because I think people that are active in one guild are usually active in at least another one. And their skills kind of range between them, so I mean, content varies each week. So could we say that the foundation or the team get a list together of say, a certain number of people and they're allocated like five or 10 hours per week and just to say, okay, you have these five hours that you're gonna be paid for. You do these different things, you can, you have these hours to make stuff. And then at the end of each week or every fortnight, we can kind of reevaluate it perhaps. That's one thing I think of.
Just to comment on that, like first of all, in the spirit of, of course, of decentralization, I don't think that one person should be like the leading figure of this podcast. That's not actually, like even if that person is like really good at what they do, I don't think it's a good idea, because that person can die tomorrow. God forbid, but that can happen, you don't want one person in there. So definitely it should be like a group thing or like, at least in the beginning, there should be at least two people, you know? And we can help each other in the podcast, like if we have like a guest or something, we could help each other to manage like the whole conversation and to keep it going basically. If someone doesn't have anything to do, anything to say, sorry, the other person can say at least something or make a joke or whatever, keep it going basically.
I have an idea actually. Crandano linked up his contact of his who is doing Crandano-related. He has like a YouTube channel. I know he's shown some interest, so just, you asked about me, Roger. Although I'm not interested in kind of getting deep into the podcast. I'm like, I would love to help facilitate it as it taking its own kind of life. And I think I can definitely help with that. Perhaps this contact from Crandano could be a great connection to help get it off with some legs. Sounds pretty cool, man.
Fly, Fly, you got, you got like the perfect voice for a podcast, like seriously. I think most people would agree. I think most people would agree in there, you got like the perfect voice for a podcast, seriously.
You know, I am more than happy to make guest appearances, brother.
Thanks, appreciate it, appreciate it. So yeah, I think we can definitely, like next time we meet for like the video, for the video group, we can definitely like brainstorm for people to kind of talk to and ideas, you know? Like kind of visions and stuff like that. And even in Town Hall right now, if someone has an idea or anything, I don't know, just throw it out there. Let's get you inspired.
Great energy, man, love it.
Appreciate it.
You're awesome, guys, love you so much.
Thanks, appreciate it.
Yeah, it's really great, can only, I think I agreed with pretty much everything that was said, good stuff. Let me actually adjust the slide that's on with saying the video workshop. That's the one that Thursday 18 UTC, correct?
Yeah, that's like the main marketing workshop.
Yeah, fair, but so that is the one referred to when it was referred to like the video workshop? Or is that a third session?
That's a different one actually. In the Friday, in, or in the workshop and on the Friday, we were discussing in marketing. Well, maybe this is a good point, because it's related to marketing, I guess. So if Crandano wants to give the lowdown, perhaps he's best placed to.
Oh yeah, do you mean moving the video subgroup into the workshop on Thursday?
Fly You Fools?
Yeah, yeah, we talked about this. Basically during the marketing video workshop, there were, there were quite, there were a few people that came, four, five. Unfortunately, it was just me and Roger engaging. So I considered and shared with the others that I didn't think it was kind of necessary yet to make a separate marketing videos meeting. I don't think it's justified with two people. And perhaps it could be better kind of integrated into the marketing workshops every week on Thursday until we kind of can't contain it, then we can perhaps make a specialist group. But also I guess the consideration of marketing work, oh, sorry, the podcast, is also something to kind of consider of, is that, is that something that we can kind of? Yeah, there's a few options there that we can look at, how we do the meetings, how many? Did I make sense? I think I was just...
No, yeah, it makes sense, makes sense.
Yeah, that makes total sense.
Like in most of the times, people are like, they listen to you and then they start nodding. I think most people do that, but like, we can't see your faces, but they still nod, I guess, yeah, exactly.
There's this camera button within Discord, but no pressure. Hey, there we go, green screen, everything. There we go. Of course, completely not obliged to turn on your camera if you don't want to, just pointing that out.
Camera on gives extra rewards. Let's say camera on gives extra rewards. Five eight six.
Participation bandwidth increase, yeah, valuable.
I mean, it's more fun to look at, I think. If you, if you watch a meeting without cameras, it gets a bit dull.
That's true, not so much for us though, it's quite nice just watching you sometimes do your thing. Sometimes it doesn't feel so necessary for us to be on. I guess you're just looking at a blank of PFPs.
That's the advantage with Zoom though. Zoom naturally invites people more to turn off the camera. Discord is more like, ah, fuck you, watch out my Discord 10th.
Now I think it depends on how many people already have a camera on. In Zoom, it's host stars, then like every other person who joins usually also turns it in. And if there are too many people, then they start telling you.
Yeah, game theory basically.
Because in Discord, everybody joins in, camera off, and then it's like, okay, he's off, I'm off, and then it scales.
Right.
Yeah, that's true.
We are stupid humans, we don't think, we're just too...
Silly, not stupid.
Let's see, just to stick a little bit on track. Crandano, would you like to elaborate a bit more on, well, what happened for the Marketing Guild?
Yeah, I can do that. Sup everyone. Marketing met up last Thursday for a workshop and Friday for a guild meeting. During the workshop, we discussed the Ambassador signup list. There's a lot of people interested in the program and we're working on an email to send out to those that have signed up so far. During the guild meeting, we had an interested party inquiring about short videos on the Singularity Net Marketplace and went over some ideas for that. With Deep Funding Town Hall number three coming up this Thursday at 19 UTC, there's a task created for marketing to create a video for deep funding. The task was for a total of five submissions and currently it sits at four. So if there's someone interested, check out our Dwork page for more information under the Marketing Guild page. Twitter has been staying updated, liking and retweeting ecosystem posts, as well as making posts about the Ambassador Program and Deep Funding Town Hall. Last week, there was a good number of tasks created and accomplished around the Deep Funding Town Hall, including creating a slide deck, social media posts before and after the event, clip editing, hosting and co-hosting the event. There's still a few tasks available, including creating and maintaining a Git book. I'd like to say thank you to Singularity Net Swarm for organizing the Deep Funding Town Hall and Fly You Fools for organizing so many tasks. We'll have another workshop this Thursday at 18 UTC and Marketing Guild will meet up Friday at 13 UTC. Join in on the conversation and if you have any ideas, drop them in the Marketing Guild channel.
Crandano's recaps, they are just so to point, like, oh my god, they're really good.
I'm sure he edits his voice in real time, just jumps between time zones.
Alright.
Guys, it has been fun talking to you, I have to leave, but I'll see you in the next meeting.
See you dude, thanks for the ideas, have a good day.
See you guys, see you guys, bye bye.
Could I add one, two things to Crandano's also, especially about the Deep Funding Town Hall?
Yes, it's also on the next slide a little bit, but if it's connected to the Marketing Guild, it's fine?
No, no, then let's wait for the next slide.
Sure, oh, I may have lighted a little bit and it's the slide after that one. So I guess I need to keep moving on the slides, otherwise we never, we never get there.
Let's move on this.
Cool, well, I do want to address the final thing on the list. It was also shared in the chat, if you scroll a little bit up. We do have a public calendar of public events, so including all the, yeah, all the Ambassador Program sessions and also deep funding sessions get added to that. So if you haven't yet, scroll up a little bit in chat and then add it to your Google Calendar to never miss a meeting again. And then a small update on the tasks side of things. Now I got some questions about when's the next distribution of rewards happening? That will be early next week. Yeah, before it was on a monthly schedule and yeah, it's a, well, as mentioned before, it's a bit of manual work and I don't really want to commit to doing that on the weekly. Because the moment I'm one second later, I get all kind of people asking like, hey, what's up, what's up, what's up, what's happening? So yeah, the next distribution will be early next week. And also with a decent chance that it might be done by the Treasury Guild. Then on the translation tasks, well, the January update blog is more of a recap by now. That's not live yet, so I couldn't meet the task yet, once it's posted, which fingers crossed should be tomorrow, the day after, but pretty nearby. Once it's public, I'll make the translation task as well. Then yeah, well, just a small reminder, it did get mentioned already, but there's a dedicated section for the Marketing Guild on Dwork and also for deep funding related tasks. And that ties into, I think, at least, into you Felix, what you wanted to mention. This is pretty much the, oh, I didn't even mention on the slide. Okay, you can mention what you want about the Town Hall, I thought it was on the slide actually.
Yeah, Deep Funding Town Hall, some of you remember, we had the very first one actually in December last year, together with Singularity Network Foundation, where we spoke about deep funding. No, actually it was much more about Singularity Net overall, to give a pitch and all that. And then last week, we had the, let's say first official one really. And before this, I had some quick chat with Jan and Pete. and all that. And then last week, we had the, let's say, first official one, really. And before this, uh, had some cool chat with Jan and Pete. And we said, hey, why not making the Deep Funding Town Hall a program of the Ambassadors? Because, yeah, here we have already the most engaged, committed and well and most experienced folks from within the Singularity Net ecosystem already. So we created our own space on the Ambassadors DWork. And just bootstrapped also the last time to see actually how many tasks can we create around the Town Hall. So the main idea is that the Town Hall is really mostly run on tasks, so rewarded bounties, there then. Which Crandano just gave a beautiful recap on them. And the main idea is really to have this fully hosted and organized in the future by Singularity and Ambassador Program. And from our side from Swarm, what is, what we could do is we introduce everything what we learned in the last two years about community events and Town Halls we established in Catalyst. But this thing here should then ideally be really be hosted by you, you guys, then actually. So everybody who is interested in taking a little bit of lead in organizing the tasks around the Town Halls and then organization, ping me, reach out. Flyer fools is already on board. He is already looped into the whole thing. And yeah, because in the best case, this Town Hall, they would accrue on a recurring base, like this one here, right now. And yeah, that's my spiel, I think. I can shut up.
Ooh, nice.
So if anybody would like to engage, please, please, please reach out. You're very welcome. And we'll do everything what we can to onboard, introduce and empower and engage you there.
Nice.
Yeah, we got, I'm, I'm here to help too. If you guys have any questions about that, been running after Town Hall with the IOG team in their Town Hall for the last year. So yeah, Swarm, we've got lots of experience and here to share it. So, let's go.
Sweet. Is there anything this Thursday for the Town Hall that you can think of off the top of your head that you guys are needing?
Hosting, for example, hosting. Because hosting and hosting was both then the last time from uh Catalyst Swarm folks. Cause they know exactly already how it works and all the stuff. So we know, okay, introducing them to a new event costs us a second. Yet we would really love to build this experience and expertise within you guys. So if you would like to co-host, for example, one of the rooms where the presenters come and present their deep funding proposals. And would like to moderate, facilitate one of these rooms. If you would like to do the host for the Deep Funding Town Hall, what Tommy Fly, for example, did last week. Just short welcome, hot shot introduction, setting a nice tone, setting the nice atmosphere. This would directly pop up to my head, I think.
Yeah.
Yeah, and uh this is very rewarded as well. Co-hosting breakout rooms uh is rewarded with two hundred ADR, two hundred AGIX and two hundred symbol for each co-host.
Which is a non-substantial amount uh I have to add there. That's uh it's, wait, my English is breaking down slowly as the day progresses. It's a, it's a very substantial amount, not a.
Yeah, I was gonna say. That's a great deal right now. Yeah.
Um, so are, are these uh currently on DWork? Cause I did see them for the previous, but I think that may have been on Swarm DWork.
No, no, this was already on the Singularity Net Ambassadors DWork space. You know, you, you even opened the uh Town Hall space, the Deep Funding Town Hall space.
There's too many different spaces. Sure, cool. There's a link in uh in chat. Uh, thanks, Diva. So if you're interested in that, yeah, well, I, to me, it was a, it was a great experience, this uh last week's Town Hall. It was just a top-notch level of, of organization by Swarm and yeah, then this whole approach of them super enthusiastically wanting to share the experience. I mean, it's amazing. Thanks a lot for that.
Yeah, yeah, if I can chime in, so lovely uh to be uh yeah, for us to have the opportunity to just like go at it with these deep funding town halls. For me, guys, it was a really good experience um contributing this past time, so I definitely recommend. See you there.
Good stuff. Um, then something I do want to um bridge into something connected to deep funding round two. Um, and that is, uh, I want to uh mention that right now, there's um, the proposal period has closed, so you cannot propose um, or submit new proposals anymore. In the current uh stage, uh, there's community uh discussion and um, I'll link in chat, what's actually just on deepfunding.ai. Uh, if, if you go to the website on the menu, it says projects and proposals. And off there you will find all the proposals of the current round. Um, and there's a hundred K AGIX available for rewards on participation. And this amount of tokens was set in a moment in time where the token price was not where it is right now. Um, so the, please don't expect the, the same dollar amount of rewards for every deep funding round. Um, but yeah, there's, there's, there's very um generous rewards for, for participation there. And something to notice that you can also um rate feedbacks which others are given. And that's pretty important on the reputation side of things. Um, in the way to combat, for example, people simply posting nonsense or, well, feedback, but uh not like proper feedback, like constructive feedback. If you see that happen and uh, yeah, please, please downvote it. Or if you see proper, good feedback, please upvote it. That's, that's really um helpful and, yeah, on all the reputation calculations, which are also running there.
Thing to this, uh, by going through a shitload of proposals, very often concerns, you can see comments which literally mean fucking nothing. They're not even related to the proposals, definitely not a concern, and mostly having two, three thumbs up. Just because they're thumbs up doesn't mean this is great content. If you see, hey, wait, no, this fucking makes no sense. Feel free to also post thumbs down. So, it's just a short note here.
Quite the concept, but, but very true. Uh. Um, yeah, well, that, yeah, so I'll post uh, I'll post a link in a bit. Um, but yeah, just wanted to point that out. Um, then another thing I wanted to point out is that uh coming Thursday at fifteen UTC? It says fifteen, but when I read it makes me doubt. It is fifteen UTC. Cool. Uh, there's a session on the loyalty rewards. Uh, proposals for that could be submitted until uh yesterday end of day. And the vote for, for both deep funding round two and for the allocation of the rewards will be on uh February twenty until twenty sixth. So right now, that's also in the phase where the uh proposals can still be refined, but the discussion can really zoom in on the current proposals. Like, there's no room for um new proposals anymore. Um, yeah, if you're interested in that, uh, please join the session. It will be um here on Discord as well. Thanks, Diva, again for linking that. That's indeed the link to the challenge on the loyalty rewards allocations. And I do think that covers most of the topics I wanted to cover. Are there any questions about these uh two specific uh topics?
Yeah, I have a, a question. Um, last week, we had, I think, thirty, thirty-seven presenters in the four breakout rooms, or was it twenty-seven? And um are there more for Thursday and is it scheduled out? I guess that would be my whole uh question in two words.
I believe, uh, well, the number was smaller. Um, Felix, do you have the insight on the numbers?
Sixteen, sixteen presentations so far. So we could actually, uh, yes, the closeout, uh, the signup will close tonight. And then tomorrow, we can fix the shadow already. And most likely having a little bit more time for open discussions then as well, as we have much less presentations. Most of them presented already last week. And then maybe, yeah, introducing maybe also some improvements, what was suggested last time already. Some shorter presentations and more time for follow-up conversations and all this stuff. So, yep.
How many do you think you have for Thursday, uh Felix? Uh, presentations or requests?
Sixteen.
Cause I was, six, oh, sixteen for this week. I, I was wondering if we could um change the format a little bit just for experimentation and uh grill the presenters a little bit more in the nuts and bolts, sort of like, what's that TV show? That uh everybody seems to like. I don't watch much TV, but you know, actually ask them questions, nuts and bolts, do you know what you're talking about type thing, all in one room, if the time.
And dragon's done. Actually, it's a good suggest. We tried it already also because with Swarm, we host Idea Fest since front five, which is pretty much one and a half year. And each fund we try something new. Problem is, we always had problem with the QAs. Because very often in order to have a proper QA, the audience have to know very well about the proposal. Most of the audience didn't read through all the proposal. So this is something where first you would have to know that the people know really well about the proposals which get presented in order to be able to put, to pull out high-quality questions then.
Either that or, I mean, I could imagine that there could be deeper conversations with more time. So I mean, the first question someone might ask might, I don't know, assume something wrong and then gives time for feedback and more of a kind of uh dialogue rather than just a question and an answer and then next question.
What worked quite well in previous runs is that the co-host, actually the facilitator, prepared some questions. And if there's nothing coming from the community, well, some, we have some really nice questions. For example, I love the question. What are you doing if your proposal not get funded? Like, ah, uh, but this is a really good question, actually. Well, will you stop to execute it? Because if you think it's a really great idea, why should you even give any shit about a proposal? You should execute your idea, right? But yes, can.
That's cool. Great. Nice, man.
Yeah, I mean, like, go ahead, Peter.
No, 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 go.
Um, I was gonna say, yeah, like, uh, would it come with the, we can do if we have sixteen presenters, like last time we had around thirty. If we have sixteen this time and we still do the same number of rooms and we have the same number of co-hosts, the more, more people that step, step up, the better, then we can have more room for Q in a, in the rooms. Um, it's just a simple math problem of how many we can get done, how many we can, how much time we can allot to each presenter in the hour, hour and a half that we want to plan on being there. So.
How many co-hosts, man?
Yeah. We had about eight, eight hosts and co-hosts, or eight or nine hosts and co-hosts last time. Uh, two per, two per room and then Tommy to do the main room. And it was very smooth with uh, with having two. We ran Idea Fest with just one host in each room, I think, last year. This was a lot easier having, having two, I, in my experience. So, so, and that's nice. It made it very, made the burden of responsibility, you know, keeping time and holding people accountable, uh, spread it out a little bit. And that's make, that's nice. So, the more hosts and co-hosts we have to do these types of things, ready to go, the more good questions we can generate, the more uh time we can give presenters and the more question and answer uh time we can develop, yeah.
Hmm, I, I want to add just for uh, I, I, I think it's important that um we, we don't fully change the, the concept. Uh, so like, it shouldn't be a drawback for those who stepped up and, and were part of the first session. That to have like a easier time. And then if, if you happen to be like, oh, I can't make it. Oh, there's a new session. Well, join that one. And then you'll be very um put in a very difficult session. That's not completely fair, because these videos, they will be put onto the proposal pages. And yeah, so it needs to be, uh, yeah.
That gives me an idea. And then perhaps it could help if you need more presenters is to ask the people um that have already presented, like, hey, would you like another session where you go specifically into one thing or where you go through a grilling? That could be a possibility if you need to, for instance, um get more presenters, so.
Or, or have, have, have presenters come together to talk about strategy in the different pools or something like that. You could
Nice.
Point it at, at, instead of at specific projects, the whole pool. But yeah, we do want to keep it consistent, at least getting going. Go ahead, Felix.
Maybe also just we can conversation because don't want to take over the call here, but the, uh, we definitely should maybe have a follow-up call only for this. And getting some ideas there then. Because also this week's Town Hall won't be the last one, right? And then also the format will change a little bit and we don't have proposal presentations anymore. Then we have other topics coming up. I think it's just healthy to have some chats calls around there as well and then create directly the tasks and to develop it further.
Yeah, and I, I do need to hop off at the top of the hour.
Alright, yeah, I thi- I think we can definitely uh follow up on this. Um, but yeah, in light of the time and also with the Process Guild popping up in one minute, um. Yeah, I, I think that, that covers it for now. Uh, at the same time, my sheets are pretty much um finished. Um, there's some room for, for additional open topics, uh, suggestions, questions, uh, random thoughts, ideas for tasks or work groups, um. There's not that much time left, but a little bit. So if anybody wants to add something to this meeting, now would be the time.
Open up the Process Guild meeting. Chat in the Process Guild chat.
Yeah, amazing. Um, and that wraps it for now. Um, thanks a lot for attending. Uh, good to see so many faces and um either see you on the Process Guild meeting or see you during any of the many, many meetings. Thanks a lot.